How come your flag's not at half staff?
I got good news though. I went out and I got great pictures.
You got what?
Great pictures, right? So, I didn't know what kind, so I got Ruby Red and I got regular and I got like another type, so.
Well, Ruby Red is the basic, is best.
But if you don't have that, then you use the regular, you put shot green in there and it fixes it.
All the basics are covered.
Barked in three years. So. You have a map? I don't have a map. I don't have a map. You have a map? Yeah, I'd like a map. Alright, what am I looking at? What? He's gonna run it along the road?
This is the, this is the road they're gonna take, it looks like.
Yeah, well, that's like you want to take. What I wanna know is.
It just, it just seems like you're fanning the flames of the fire by doing something.
Okay, I'm not. So how come this is on strategic planning day and not regular commission day? Oh, okay.
He just wants to make a public comment.
Oh.
See, we're, we're kinda, uh, we're in a trap.
We're good, right? I will thank you more than that.
I, uh, I brought up the same thing.
Nobody, nobody else has any.
I don't think they set up for anything. All they want is their own empire.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's unfortunate. You know, the problem is, like many other county and like, they're so big, they have so much manpower, they really don't need anybody else. And they're, they're, I think they have their own insurance.
So it's gonna go a little ways up and then it's gonna run down.
Yeah.
So it's.
It would help, it would help me if I knew what was, it'll, this, this looks like it's gonna be in front of like the meat lodge.
Yes, it's gonna run on the north side of.
Why doesn't it run behind them?
I don't know. This is, well, this is the route that they wanted, I don't think. Because they wanna come down this, they wanna stick to the roads because they wanna be able.
Well, why don't they go like this and go there?
Because then they'd have to come down across the bluff without a, they'd have to make a.
Oh, is this, um?
Yeah, this is along the road there.
This is the road that goes to Utica?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So then they cross on the north side of the highway, then they wanted to come down, what they, they wanted to do is they wanted to come. And I already talked to them about this, the fact that they wanted to come down, straight down the, uh, the lot line. This property here, this field there. Uh, that would be essentially in the middle of what Go Road should be for the right length, it's gonna have flat.
Yeah. Why don't they go all the way in the corner then?
And then down this way.
Yeah.
There's just too much stuff to do, intersection already.
So why don't they go all the way down here?
No, that's yours. That's Mr. Welch's, uh, what he wants to kind of discuss a little bit and then, and then.
This is my watch.
This is the pole, this is what they want.
It's, uh, one o'clock, so I'll call the meeting order.
Okay, turn your.
There. Quite a difference. Uh, so I'll call the meeting order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome guests. It'll be just a second here. Uh, if you have cell phones, uh, please put them on off or quiet. Would you take a roll call, please?
Wanda?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
John?
Here.
John?
Here.
Does anyone have a reason to abstain, uh, for financial conflict of interest?
No. I do not.
No.
I do not.
I do not. Thank you.
I would approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second, the agenda, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Now it's time for public comment. You may step up to the mic, please. Mr. Welch.
It's not, it's not up.
Sorry, turn it on. There we go. My name's Mike Welch. I am not Moose. Moose works at the dam and spells his name with a C-H. Mine's spelled with an S-H. I live at one fourteen Quarry Pines Drive out on Highway fifty-two by the dairy dock. And by the way, I noticed your agenda today is strategic planning. I'm a retired Air Force Colonel and a retired instructor in the business department at Briar Cliff University. So if you need any help, I'll be glad to pitch in. The issue I have today is the one that Wanda was asking questions about, and that is that East River is planning to put in an above-ground, high-voltage power line across Highway fifty-two, including cart tracks, the dairy dock, my property, and a number of other businesses on the north side of Highway fifty-two. I want you to know that this is a very recent change. They did not plan to do this. Their original plan was to go on the south side of Highway fifty-two, across the farmland, which would have been a much safer option. However, they were unable to get the easement, and as a result, they're trying to go across the north side of Highway fifty-two. I had many of the same questions that you did, Wanda. I heard you asking, uh, Ryan, uh, before the meeting, why don't they go this way and why don't they go that way? I've handed you a set of documents, including a map. If you notice, it's oriented north-south along the long axis and the, uh, horizontal axis is Highway fifty-two. I've, I've been in contact with their land agent, a man named Andrew Nielsen from DGR Engineering, and he, uh, is obviously in a tight spot. They've already started work on their substation on Deer Avenue, and, uh, they don't have access. So they're in a bad position. I've offered them a number of options, the easiest of which would go, would be to go straight south from, uh, I think it's, what is it, Northwest Energy. In any case, straight down Highway, or four thirty-sixth Avenue to Highway thirty-three, kitty-corner across to the four thirty-seven slash Deer Avenue right-of-way, and straight south on Public right-of-way, down the embankment, and straight down Deer Boulevard. Now, they're in a, a very difficult position because they, they find themselves with a partially completed substation and no way to get to it. The other alternative that might make sense would be to go straight down four thirty-seven Avenue to the Yankton Lake and then across to Deer Avenue above ground. Failing that, a common sense solution would be to go underground on either side of Highway fifty-two instead of above ground. I understand that they don't do this or haven't done it in the past, but they could do it. This isn't rocket science. The technology is being used by Cable One or the Cable Company and any number of others. Uh, in any case, I'll be back on April eighteenth on your agenda. I don't wanna take up too much of your time today. I know it's important. But, uh, I have been in touch with, uh, Mike Stevens. I've been in touch with Gina Unoff. Uh, I have spoken, uh, this morning to the CEO of BY Electric, uh, let's see, it's Stephanie.
Horst.
Horst, exactly. Thank you. She was very nice. I talked to her for about an hour. She is going to, uh, East River Elec- Electric next week, Tuesday morning, for a meeting. She said she would bring up our concerns. And, uh, I'll offer or have, will offer to accompany her to that meeting and make the same kind of presentation I am to you. So, uh, does anyone have any questions for me? If you don't?
We're not allowed to ask questions or during public comment.
In that case, uh, I'll get off.
We'll talk to you in two weeks from next Tuesday.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, our strategic planning meeting, uh, and, uh, we discussed having this meeting, inviting District Three, Eric, uh, to come over and, and kinda make a presentation, uh, on, uh, the process and so ask questions, uh, whenever we want, right?
Yeah.
I'll turn the floor over to you then, Eric.
Alright.
Let's just wait and see if they, do you have it?
Good.
No, I printed these out for you.
Yeah, but do you have one here, so?
No.
I'm not sure exactly, like, you know, how much you wanna cover today or, or how much you wanna bang out today. Um, but, uh, uh, like, the first rule is, it's a Friday afternoon. I'm, I'm ready to be as informal as you want, as long as you want to be informal. Uh, and secondly, we wanna have a good, uh, we wanna have a good discussion. If it gets to a heated debate, that's fine. Hopefully, good things come out of those kinds of discussions. Uh, so yeah, Don, uh, Don contacted us at our office a couple of weeks ago, wondering if we could help walk you through, uh, the, the priorities that you had set up as a commission. Uh, and strategically think about, you know, not just necessarily, you know, the next two weeks, uh, of operating the county and how you do things, but really kinda start setting some, some goals and objectives for, you know, beyond, you know, even the next six months or.
I'm hot, ain't I?
Well, I turned it on so our folks at home could hear you.
Alright, gotcha. I backed into it.
In case somebody's interested.
Good thing I didn't have a radio. So, uh, so yeah, this, this is hopefully gonna set you up for talking about and thinking about, uh, you know, beyond, you know, beyond the next few months. So maybe even, even a scope of five years on, on these priorities. Um, and maybe the intent or the, the outcome of this planning session might be, hey, let's come back next year and do the same thing. Um, you know, and evaluate, you know, what we've done on these five topics. Maybe there's a whole new set of topics to strategically think about over the next five years after that. Uh, so what I did was I handed out, uh, this, this table, kinda looks like a table. This is the outline that I'm proposing that you have for your strategic planning, um, whether it's a, you know, if, if this turns into a planned document, which I think, uh, is very doable, uh, or even this, this will hopefully, hopefully help us through, you know, discussing the, the priorities today. So, if you look there, uh, you know, the first, the first main line below the top there is, is the strategic plan and the scope. What, you know, what should be the scope of our, of our plan? Do you want it to be, you know, one year, three years, five or ten years? What do you think?
Comments?
Five years is pretty reasonable to start out with. I mean, we get a lot of things that need attention now and I, I think a lot of these will lead us to longer-term goals as well, but we've got some real challenges that are close to us.
The problem with putting too long of a timeframe on it is I find that people have a tendency to kick the can down the road.
Yeah, exactly. That's, you know, I, I would, I would suggest we start out at one year to develop into a five-year plan. Yeah.
Yeah, except for I, I kinda go on the other end of, you know, longer term is also good to have because, you know, having a vision of where we're going, a big vision is, uh, can help, you know, it's not a stick-to-plan, but a good, a big vision is, is definitely something worthwhile to keep everything else in focus too, so.
Agreed.
Uh, it's a great way of reassessing short-term plans to always stay on track.
So this is, that's thinking of visions and stuff. This is, this is right off of your county commission, your county website. So it has the mission statement, the business statement, and your, and your, um, your, like, principles, your values, you know, what you, how you operate your, your county. So I guess one comment about the, the scope would be, actually, all of you are correct in, in what you're thinking. Um, I think it would be fair, it would actually be, uh, safe to say we could do, you know, five-year goals and objectives, but come back every year and say, hey, are we meeting these? You know, are we meeting the goals and objectives that we came up with? So it can be kind of a combination of short-term and midterm planning. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Um, what, uh, what I handed out, so hopefully that will fill, you know, these, we can get that, we can basically check that off the list. You've got, you've got a mission statement as a county, you've also got a mission statement, and you also got, uh, you know, values that are listed down there below, so, um, so we got, uh, we can check that off the box right now and say, alright, we're productive so far. Great. Um, now, the next line below is the priorities that you came up with as a commission here a few weeks ago. So, that, that's kinda your framework for this plan. You've got a, you've got a strategy for roads, you've got a strategy for detention centers, uh, or services, sorry, and advanced application of technology, ambulance services, and shared county responsibilities. Now, what I, I guess let's stop here a second and say, or ask you this question, what, uh, what do you wanna get done today? You wanna just talk about stuff for a while? Um, you wanna bang out all the, all the goals and all the objectives for these topics or strategies?
I think that's probably an overshot to get that done in a day.
I, I agree. I mean, what, I told you on the phone, I mean, I'm willing to stay here till five, but of course, everybody's gonna get pretty wore out by, uh, by four o'clock for sure. So, yeah, I think, here's, here's what I think, is you could probably do this over the course of a couple of these kind of meetings. Um, and, you know, whatever, whatever you, uh, whatever you think about that, it's fine. I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to whatever. But yeah, we can stand here and, and hammer out the details all afternoon, but it would get, you know, our minds are gonna get pretty, pretty, uh, pretty tired after, after a while. But, uh, um, I think what we could do is establish some goal statements for each topic. And what I was thinking is, you know, I know each of you commissioners have a, have an assignment for that topic, right? So, okay, I'm gonna lead, I'm gonna lead the whole discussion. But, you know, the, the topic that you have or the strategy you have, I want you to be the topic on, on that, okay? So it could be kinda the go-to for, you know, coming up with the, the goal statements, and if we can do it, come up with some objectives for those, uh, for those statements, that'd be great. So yeah, we could get, we could get way down the weeds and talk about, you know, what exactly are we going to do and how are we gonna measure those, those, uh, those objectives?
And I, I, I'd like to get into the discussion on formulation of the plan, how, how one does that, how, how you implement it, what you think about to put in the goals.
Yep. Okay, so, um, I also have, now, you don't have the whole copy, but in that, uh, series of, of handouts I gave you are little, little snippets from, from various county strategic plans across the country. Um, actually, there's a cou- there's a couple from Florida, so I kinda almost wonder if, if the state of Florida has like a, a requirement for counties to do these kind of plans? Um, because they all kinda have the same overall theme. But you can see, uh, you can see some similarities in the plans, so there's, uh, we have like five or so different kinda, different examples. There are, you know, I saw, I saw similar, uh, objectives or, or overall goals, you know, like, like what you have. And then the, the commissioners came up with a list of, uh, of objectives to help achieve those goals. I think, and you saw, you saw some of these, so this would be like the whole document here. Um, so like this is, uh, this is Lane County, Oregon. And this, their document is maybe, maybe seven or eight pages. So the ones that are, the pages that, uh, have the, have the fine print on them, that was, that's, that's from Lane County, Oregon. But you can see, like, for example, I think I get a copy of strategic priority number.
Two? Three.
Three, okay. For the three? Yeah, there we go. Yeah, that page there. So, you can see, and I apologize for the, for the faint, the faint writing, the faint text, not my, that wasn't, uh, you know, they had a goal, they have an overall goal at the top of that, at the top of that strategy. And then they have objectives listed A through F of things to think about or do before, you know, to reach that goal. And at the end of that page, they've got, they've got a, a set of performance measures. They're gonna say, this is, you know, this is what we wanna do, and then after a year or so, we wanna see, we wanna see these outcomes. You know, so for example, if it's, uh, if it's detention services, uh, we wanna see an increase of, uh, of revenue by, uh, three percent, you know, at the end of the year in, in detention services, that kinda stuff.
Eric, uh, can I add something? And, and maybe we're talking the, the same thing. I mean, I'm looking at some of these goals and some of them are pretty narrowed down, but like, I don't mean to rain on like John's parade, like Rhodes is so wide that I think we need to, you know, I, I guess I call that a, you know, the smart goal, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time, I mean, the reality, we don't have enough money to fix all our roads. We probably aren't gonna, with, with us being denied for that bridge improvement grant for Stone Church, in all likelihood, if we don't get a grant for that in the next couple of years, it's gonna be closed. I mean, and so how do we, I think we need to maybe just narrow that down a little bit and make it actually something we can achieve.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we're just, you know.
Well, I think, you know, um, like you were talking, like, okay, you know, we have five-year plans, ten-year plans, five-year plans, one-year plans.
Yeah.
And that's where it is. It's like, we have roads, that's a, that's a very general, big category. And exactly like you said, we want to narrow that down. That's a, we gotta, we gotta make a sort of this five-year plan, uh, that's very generalized but adaptable. But then, you know, for this year, the one year, we wanna narrow it down to what we wanna achieve this year. You know, and that's, and that's what it is. It's like.
Don't we have that on roads now?
Yeah, we, we have a five-year plan.
We have a road plan.
Five-year plan.
Five-year plan.
We don't have a housing plan.
We don't have a housing plan. We don't have other plans, yeah. I was just, I went back to like, pulled out the original list of.
John has the easy one.
Yeah, he thinks so. What about the bridge?
I was just noting again, like, how we had some of these that we were saying in that last meeting, that, you know, they're very large, open-ended things, and those would be like our big broad-term plans, our long-term plans, and then some of these were much more specific and those should be falling into our one-year plans or five-year plans.
Exactly. I, I'm with you a hundred percent. You know, and, and something like on roads is maybe we, we wanna go to, we chip seal an extra ten percent in the next five, you know, that's at least a goal that we can be moving toward.
Achievable, yeah.
We, our goal was ten percent, but we were achieved, achieved eight percent, but we were close, or something like that, yeah.
And, and, and I think we've already kinda done some of that with the roads as, as far as Mike and I, you know, we've, we've did that plan that we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, micro-surface, uh, twelve miles instead of redoing, resurfacing that road, we're gonna do another four miles where we're actually gonna resurface, uh, the road that is desperately needed. So, so I think we've kinda started on that. We still got a long ways to go, but that's kind of our intent is to
whittle out some smaller projects and then, then with, with looking at larger, uh, things down the road, so.
So how did, how did, how did the topics come about? I know, Don, you mentioned there was kind of a, a survey kinda, but.
No, well.
One commissioner saying, yeah, hey, we need this, or?
Don, Don had twenty-six choices and we voted on them.
I, I sat down, uh, looking at, uh, the issues in the county that I felt were important, uh, and that we needed to have goals set for, and I listed them, then we went down through as a commission, and we, uh, rated them whether we think it's a one, two, three, four, or five, and we took the top, none of them had five. Uh, we took the top four and five categories. And I, as I say in the second page of that, doesn't mean we still don't work on the rest of the stuff.
But, and, and if, if we're going through this planning process, I'm, I'm, I'm just almost certain that a lot of these things are gonna come up as maybe some of the objectives on the five priorities. So like what, what kinda things were talked about, like say with roads?
Well, I'll give you.
That brought, that brought it up to the, to the top?
This isn't on the top, but I'll give you an example. Um, we had an eight-county meeting yesterday at Sioux Falls, and at the meeting, uh, several of the eight counties, we're talking about building, uh, jails, detention centers, various things. Everybody can't afford that. If, if Sioux Falls builds a gigantic jail, we're gonna lose the federal prisoners, or we're gonna lose the BIA prisoners, or we're gonna lose, uh, Union County prisoners, or we're gonna lose Bonham County prisoners, and we're gonna lose eight hundred thousand dollars of our profit that we make off the jail system.
Yep.
So, I think we need to be planning for that. We need to be making, uh, contacts with other counties and try to, uh, get them to commit to, uh, short-term commitments or medium-term com- commitments.
Yeah, Clay is building their jail too, that forty-four-bed jail and.
Yeah.
Yep. There's a lot to consider.
They're twenty-five miles from us, and we're taking federal prisoners and BIA prisoners and.
Marshal holds, we got, and we got a lot.
Makes the most sense to go next door. But that can be applied to roads, it can be applied to.
Actually, it, it doesn't because the federal penitentiary is here.
Pardon?
It doesn't make sense for them to go to Clay County because the prison camp is in Yankton. That's why we get a lot of the federal prisons, prisoners. They get in trouble at the camp, they come to the jail. Before they go to the prison camp, they come to the jail.
Gary, Gary, did that regional jails, uh, pack that failed too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, never mind.
There, there was a, a study to your point, Don, at the, the state where, that would allow counties to, like you're saying, we could have formed an alliance with Clay and Bon Home and all of those, and came together and maybe each commission, each county would have a commissioner on the board and that would run the jail, but they'd be obligated to support that, and I guess that's another thing that went down in flames from the state. The, it wa- it started out as counties need money to fund their jails, and it went to, well, the state's taking it all and building two new prisons. And so we didn't get it, that's how it happened.
Which, yeah.
So, uh, yeah.
But one of the major expenses, one of the major expenses to us is transportation of prisoners back and forth. Anyway.
And, and, uh, I can reach out, cause is that Randy DeBert who's gonna be on that county study? And I know him really well, and I can put this on the agenda when we meet for the state association is there has been talk about during COVID, transfer prisoners, they didn't do it. They had all those court, and tell me, tell me if I'm wrong, Wanda here, they were, did it by an iPad and a screen, but now they're not doing it and.
They did it by Zoom.
Yeah, but I mean, is that, I, I, that's at the judge's discretion, I assume?
Well, it's at the judge's discretion, the, um, the presiding judge in this circuit, Judge Gearing, um, will do arraignments by Zoom. However, the law says that the defendant has the right to be present with their attorney. So in case the, the client has a question, the defendant has a question, they can communicate. If I'm here and you're in Sioux Falls, and the judge is, um, in Turner County, for example, that's hard to do. She will not do change of pleas or sentencings by Zoom.
Understood, okay. And that's unlikely to probably change, in your opinion?
Well, she, the world is getting more digital. I think what they may just do is make the attorneys go to wherever the defendants are, that. I mean, you can schedule your change of pleas, for example, if I've got five of them, I can do all five, I just go there and do five. You know, it, it's, seems to cost less for me to drive than for the state to drive five different times, to bring five different people, because they don't like to have them all in the same car.
And.
And they don't use a van.
And Wanda, you're, you're probably the smartest one about this, do you think something like that would be worth engaging our legislators on getting possibly a law change to allow for that? Would, is that possible?
So, so I think we're talking about goals and, and action steps for one of the strategies.
Sure.
Right now.
Okay.
Uh, and, and they're good, that's a good conversation. I just wanna get, I just wanna get the process down.
I'm sorry.
No, we don't wanna do, we did that yesterday, it was not fun.
Well, the ambulances, you, you can pick any one of the one, uh, five there that, that are on the top or any other one.
I can, I can relay what I've been working on with the ambulance, if you guys have liked. Visited with, uh, some of the organizations and, uh, visited with the, the city on it. And we've, Gary and I have been working at, looking at what other counties have done. We're really unique, as far as I can tell, we're the only county in the state of South Dakota that's structured this way, which makes it really difficult. Is it Pennington County went through, uh, they had an ambulance district that was in pretty severe trouble, and they hired a consultant, and I believe that that's probably the, the other entities we've been working with have really recommended that. Anything we do is going to, uh, if you say we go to an ambulance district or something like that, it's gonna require a vote of the citizens, so we're gonna need to get them engaged in the future of, of this. And like I told you guys yesterday, I mean, the, the costs keep skyrocketing and, unfortunately, any cost overruns come right out of the county budget. We're, you know, we're not able to levy a separate tax to pay for the ambulance. It has to come right out of our funds, but an ambulance district can. And so maybe that's an option to look at, so that's kinda where we're at on that. And, uh.
I take it the city's not interested in running the ambulance?
Well, uh, no, they're not. Uh, and, and to be frank, if we would go the ambulance district route, I think there's a lot of good site. From what I've seen, and Gary tell me, the, the more successful, uh, ambulance districts in the state, they have that taxi income, it would, it comes from the, the citizenry that covers it, and they have a tax levy. Exactly, pretty much similar to how the fire departments work. Now is it, you know, none of them are rich, but they're able to, to pay the bills and that's the, the ones that have been successful have gone that route, from what I, what I've seen, so.
So one of the things that I was thinking about in, in these areas is how do we engage staff? How do we develop relationships with District Three or whomever we're supposed to? Those are all goals, uh.
Are you thinking, kind of, was that where you were under this, Tony shared?
You can put it there. But a big part of, to me, like a big part of the, the ambulance or the jail, or, uh, we've got experts, uh, in the jail, in the ambulance, uh, we've got challenges and, and every, everything we've got is probably got a challenge or two. We, we need to get staff input, we, in order to get their buy-in, we have to have their input. Uh, how, how do, how does that process you see be successfully completed?
Yeah, well, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, actually, let me send a couple of these around to you guys. Just for, just for examples, cause these will, these are, these are the full, I'll start one here. And I'll start one in the middle. And then I'll start one over here by Dan.
Thank you.
And some of them, uh, some of them have actually had, uh, um.
Did you?
They've actually had, uh, you know, when they come up with their list of goals and objectives, you know, they'll, they'll, uh, assign, uh, assign a, a department, you know, to, to look after the things that you came up with. They also had, uh, one of them, one of the counties had a, a couple of, uh, surveys that they get, like a, like an online survey with, with citizens or, you know, those that may receive services on various things, and, and also staff. And those, you know, things like, you know, how do you think the, how, how do you think the highways are working? Or how do you, you know, uh, how is our, how's our, you know, law enforcement, that kinda thing, you know? So that could be, that could be a way of gathering, you know, data for your, for your plan. And it could be way down the road of gathering input, you know, from staff or departments on, you know, various things of the plan, you know, once, once you've, uh, once you've adapted it.
But it's the same thing.
Well, I think different than probably a manufacturing company or, w- we have to, we have to get buy-in and approval from the community, the citizens. So we have a double challenge there.
Well, I think that, that goes into that technology, um, cause I, I was, one of those things that I was already brainstorming about is how to engage the community more through technology. We did have a Facebook presence that was removed, but I think, you know, when you evaluate everything, we should have it, as long as it's done right, we can do it. And using, using those things to reach out to the community, get more community, community involvement. This meeting, right now, we're writing on a piece of yellow paper. Community can't even see that, can't even see what we're writing down, um, trying to get some of those things brought out more, bring out more transparency and more engagement.
Well, I'll type the subject, put it on the website.
Yeah, and website too, it's like, you know, it probably needs a little bit of modernization and, and stuff like that so that we can, so that people can find things faster, people can see things faster. So, um, there's, there's some things to be desired on our website right now, so.
Are you gonna fix those things, Mr. IT guy?
I'm not gonna fix them personally, but I can definitely oversee someone fixing them. I try not to develop websites myself.
So I'm hearing a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of engagement talk, whether it's roads, ambulances, or technology. So it sounds like, uh, you know, might be a he- a header of every, every strategy that you, uh, come up with or have, you know, you have.
I, I think it's gonna be, when you talk about engagement, um, that's gonna be key in all of our performance measures. Because at the end of the day, that's who we're serving, is the people. And we want to make sure that, that people are, you know, seeing results, that they feel like we're giving them results. So, you know, if we're, if we're not taking those polls, if we're not actually going out and seeing, and seeing, uh, getting that information, then we really don't know if we're doing a good job or not.
And I think when we were talking about this on the phone, my, my thought, um, as a planner is, you know, we never want plans to sit on shelves. And that this could definitely be a, a plan that, uh, you know, I, you know, obviously you can't do everything or cover everything, you know, in a document, um, you know, or in five years. But this is a plan that won't have to sit on the shelf, cause if you do come back and evaluate it, um, maybe it's every six months. I got, I got, there was some, a copy in here where their, the county actually evaluates every one of their actions, like every month. Like, okay, you got a little, you have a little push-free time on your.
We did, we did however, talk about having one item on our agenda, which is strategic plans, that any commissioner that wanted to bring a significant update to the group court. And, and with the TV, uh, that I guess gives some access to the public if they wanna get it.
That's true, yeah, that's a good idea. But yeah, I think even at the ver- at the very least, if you, you know, pull, let's say, let's say we develop a, a plan that looks like that, uh, you know, the pretty picture on the front and has good content in it, you know, at the very least, we'd like to have you pull that out, you know, in March of twenty twenty-four and, and then say, okay, hey, we're, you know, we said we were going to, we were gonna say, we're going to engage the public more with surveys online. Um, we wanna have X percent response. You can then pull the plan up and say, okay, did we do that? That might be, you know, so then you're probably working with what, uh, what, whatever, I guess, whatever IT, uh, do they fall under the auditor's office?
They fall under Ryan right now.
Commissioner Ryan.
You know, and that, that's the, the real tough thing about Yankton County versus some of these humongous counties is we're, we're pretty bare bones, even compared to like many Haha County. They, they have a massive amount more people and, and I guess one of the things I, I believe in, and I think most of you guys too, is we wanna try to keep our government small as possible. And, and, you know, it'd be, why it would be nice to review these all, every month, that then the government gets bigger and bigger, and I, I don't want that, and I think most of you guys are on the same. So it's a balancing act with us.
And, and it also, you know, like, you know, you look at some of these where, well, like Sarasota County, you know, look at their, their list of objectives and so forth, I mean, they gotta put it in fine print so they can fit it all in. Well, how are you supposed to manage all that? You know, I think, I think if, if you're able to develop, you know, a specific list, let's say even just five, you know, five objectives under your, under your topics or under your strategies, that should be, you know, we always, in planning school, we always said, you know, a goal, you need to make a, a goal achievable. You know, it's very, very hard to do that when you're coming up with twenty or so objectives, you know, per goal. So yeah, I think something that's realistic.
Yep.
Definitely for sure.
And, yeah, realistic and measurable and, and, and within a, a reasonable timeframe to achieve that is what, you know, I would, I would say.
So we've had a good, open discussion so far. Would, wha- what do you think, if we take one of these and kinda walk through and talk through the whole thing? Maybe we take one that's not on the high priority list and, cause I don't want Ryan to get by without having to do all the work. What do you think? Should we take, uh, we take any one of them?
So I, a question that I would have is, is like District Three or someone have like a boiler point or boiler plate, uh, survey that we could tweak and kind of, uh, make fit for us so that, that we could put that out to the county.
That's a marker, that's a marker board in that closet too, if you wanna use that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we, I haven't used that in a long time, I don't think.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, pretty fancy.
Does it automatically turn whatever I write into a digital, digital copy or?
No.
That's what your cell phone's for.
Doesn't, doesn't erase very well though, apparently.
That's a, we got a budget for a new one.
Somebody probably used a permanent marker. Versus dry erase.
Says, welcome, Lewis and Clark. Um, yeah, I better make sure I don't use, uh, flip turn on that. So, so Don, you thinking like doing one of these is kind of a dry run kinda?
Yeah, just walk our way through it.
Okay.
Then let everybody go and, and do the same thing on their own.
Okay. And then come back and review. Let's try red.
They're probably all dry.
Probably.
It's probably just as well to close that up.
Oh, that's not too bad.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll run with it for a while.
Okay.
So did, did we, did we, did he save a topic yet, or are we gonna figure it out?
I think he's just, I think he's just, do you have that list, the twenty-six items?
Yeah.
Just arbitrarily pick one. They're all fascinating.
So, so does District Three have a?
Except, except the one that says silo. Don't pick that one.
We, uh, we don't necessarily have one in how, well, okay, so I would say, uh, I would probably take one of those plans that you have in front of you and just pull that out and use that as a template. As far as like a ten, uh, or as far as a boiler plate survey, uh, we don't necessarily have one specific to a county or its services, but that wouldn't be very hard to, to do.
How many people do you actually think go on the county commission website and go, I wanna take a survey?
Probably not very many now, but if they knew that it was available to them, I don't know why they wouldn't.
I would say, I would say ten.
I, I was a little optimistic, I was thinking at least a good dozen. But, yeah, you can't just do, you can't do a survey like that, you can't just put it on the website and hope people come to you, you gotta go out and get them.
Exactly, if, if they know that, if they know that, that what they say and what they're commenting on is gonna mean something, I think they would do that.
We can say that at county commission meetings and we can say, you know, if anybody's got any ideas, but I mean, that is kind of the reason of public comment.
I know.
Why we have a sign-up board, nobody shows up but the same three people, every time.
So, and, and a lot of times those, those, whether it's survey, like a digital survey or online survey, usually a, a, a community will use some kind of distribution list, whether it's, you have emails from, from like if you're a, you know, water user or, I mean, everybody pays taxes, you know, so that might be a way to have a.
I don't think that would be a good time to take a survey.
Whether they're lucky to pay.
Yeah, particularly since valuations went up.
So do we pick an area?
Well, he's got it, he's got the list. I, I told him anything but silos.
How about, so economic growth and development, is that silos?
No, silo is its own halfway down the page.
Let's do economic growth and development.
Economic development?
And that probably ties in, we think, which probably ties in with a little bit of, uh, of, uh, planning and zoning.
I gave, I gave, uh, John, and did you guys get these ones?
I gave, I gave, uh, John, and did you guys get these ones? I, um, NACO has a really cool national association of county officials, has a research department. If you send them questions, they will research it for free and give it back to you. And, uh, so that's the top fifteen industries in Yankton County, according to twenty-one, twenty twenty-one by GDP.
Agriculture is only number eight?
That is, um, what they say.
Well, that would be direct agriculture.
See, I don't, how, how is it, how is it broke down?
Yeah, businesses that support agriculture aren't included in that category.
And, and I'm, I'm not here to, you know, cause any animosity with.
No, I, that just was surprising to me.
Yeah, it wa- and, and really what was a surprise to me too is how high finance is. It's, you know, higher than I thought and, you know.
Yeah, but that's got real estate in it and.
Yeah, well, real estate is actually another one, the third one.
Yeah, if you have, if you're, if you're measuring by gross municipal dollar, that could throw a few things out of whack a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a good, it's a good measure.
It was, it was just, uh, yeah, I figured I would bring that today and it was pretty interesting. And I have a pie chart I created, if anybody wants to see that too.
So what I, what I would have done, uh, if we were going over all these top, now the five, top five topics today would be, we would wanna, we would wanna work on turning, you know, this two word phrase or two word title into, into a goal. You know, is it, is it something a little more than just, we want more economic development? Or create, uh, may- maybe the goal is, let's, let's increase GDP in agriculture. Well, what do you think? If you were to turn, if you were to turn this into a goal, a goal statement, Yankton County should blah, 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 blah.
I think with the county, we're based on property tax, not sales tax. So I guess if we're, if we're being selfish, we want, you know, newer buildings, whatever they are, so that we could collect some sort of property tax. But we want it in a way that doesn't cause more of us to build infrastructure. So example, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a factory, let's have it on a state highway where we don't have to build the road to it. Uh, I guess that's an example that I would say. Economic development's good, but if we gotta, if we have to put in a ton of infrastructure at the county expense, that takes away from the development that we give.
Well, it's, that's all about investment and return.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, you want to, you wanna make sure that you have your areas open.
Yeah.
The best areas open for, for development.
That was my campaign model, right there.
And, uh.
What's, what was that, John?
Create new revenue streams.
Yeah, without investment, yeah, exactly. Yeah, you know, if we're, if we're gonna build up.
What is your proposal, Mr. Merkworth? Since that was your, that was your.
I have not implemented any yet, but I've only been around for three months.
Hey, hey, that's three months right there, that's.
Well, just to be technical, we can't really create new revenue streams, we just wanna increase our revenue streams.
Which is, which is solely, which is solely property tax.
Yeah, that's your, if you wanna have a goal, cause I mean, you wanna, you wanna have a goal that is a little bit lofty, right?
You know, something to kinda look forward to. So maybe it is state sales ta- or sales tax for the county and.
You can, it's insular.
Make that objective, well, and see then, well, my objectives would be to engage your lawmakers.
They tried, they, they tried that, the session.
I know, I know.
How many, how many sessions in a row has every one of those gone down, at least six?
Oh, yeah.
Every time it, yeah, it goes down and.
I did hear one legislator say this year though, that we keep kicking that down the road and sooner or later our counties are gonna.
When we talk about economic development, you know, what is it, building the economy, so that starts to go into, we need more housing, so that we can have more workers, so that we can have more businesses come into town.
I'd agree.
And, and, and it's, and we, we need to have that cycle growing stronger. So how do we measure that cycle being stronger?
So that's kinda maybe s- one of the things I could see as, you know, I, well, and you're probably familiar with the whole, you know, kinda the tiered system where, all right, we have a goal, but the objectives underneath that goal help, help you achieve the goal. So that would be one way to do it, is to help create revenue streams, or maybe, maybe we just say increase revenue.
Just increase revenues, just gathers everything.
And I just, I just wrote that up there just to get, get the discussion started, you know, as a goal. But, you know, if it works, it works for now, right? We're not, this isn't necessarily gonna be the final, this isn't gonna make the final cut. So one of the things is, yeah, create more housing or encourage more housing. Okay? How else would you?
Yeah, so the housing problem, or any businesses, just as Dan said, you don't want, you, we don't wanna build houses out in the middle of nowhere. We want them to be close to the infrastructure that we have. We don't want to be, we don't want to develop housing at the cost of putting in a lot of money into infrastructure. So we have the infrastructure we have, we can't really, we don't want to be expanding it that much, because we already know that that's already taxed. So it goes into that, what can we do around our existing infrastructure to build more housing? Build more areas for housing that are ready to develop, uh, that don't require heavy.
Going west.
So.
So I, maybe we could prioritize, you know, like along the, the state highway systems, I, I, I don't know. And, you know, and infrastructure's big, power and sewer and all of that stuff. And, and I think one of the things maybe we could, I know Nancy and I have talked about that and John is, if there would be a way, I don't know how to do it, incentivize some of these smaller towns to expand, but that's a tough.
I, and I, and I, they, that goes back into, you know, that falls heavily into planning and zoning, I think. Making sure that our zones are really well adapted to it, and, you know, like, we have our small towns and why aren't they growing? Is there a, do we have a hard boundary there that's creating, that we've artificially created?
We, we probably could just about, we probably could just about ask Nancy to relate Thrive's, uh, strategic plan in this area. Cause so far, every, everything that's been discussed is in your plan.
Correct.
In your process.
Yeah, the, the one thing I, I just wanna mention, as you're talking about developing these small communities, someone needs to provide them the technical assistance to put together, what do you need to expand your water system? You have to get on the state water plan, what does it take to do that? And you have to have someone lead them, you cannot expect a small city council in one of these small towns to understand the magnitude and the number of steps you have to take to expand your water system to be able to have a new housing development. So that's one of the steps that, if you want to expand in smaller communities, you have to figure out, how does your staff support those communities? Or what steps do you need to take to put that into place? Cause I agree, developing out some of these small towns would be great, but it's not easy and it's not cheap and it's not quick. Um, and as we talk about developing close to infrastructure, uh, close to where people wanna be, a good example is the project that Yankton Thrive is working on right now to purchase twenty-eight acres of land in the county, but we're gonna annex it into the city, so we can utilize all of the resources and the infrastructure, um, that is available to us. So technically, we're starting in the county, but we're gonna end up in the city. So it's the partnerships that you create, which I know is another one of your line items, that's really important as development continues. And as you talk about building housing along your state highways, isn't that ideally where you want commercial? Instead of housing and you wanna push the housing back so you can develop and have those other opportunities there along your highways? But that's just my two cents.
That's where District Three comes in too, is me, you know, if you come into that, that situation where, oh my God, we need to tell Utica how to get things moving, uh, you know, call us and say, hey, great, we need to figure out how to, how to get water lines in Utica. And that's where we, you know, just like Nancy said, we could walk them through the whole process of getting on the state water plan and getting an engineer, blah, blah, blah.
Well, could, could we do that? Could we work with District Three and you, Nancy with Yankton Thrive and invite our small towns to some sort of meeting where we're here to help if you guys wanna get on these programs? And there's a lot of money available now for it at least, you know, start the conversation.
To me, that'd be an, an, a action under the objective of more.
And that's something we could do in a couple of months, probably. And, and it, we could, we could take them to that point, and if, it's up to them if they wanna move forward past that.
Yeah, but just remember, like, getting on the state water plan and access to those dollars that are available now, those won't be available by the time they have a plan and everything's engineered and know what they want. So you're thinking years is what it's gonna take.
But it starts, it starts with engaging them and getting them onto the path.
Well, it's having a plan of how do you support them, yeah.
Hundred percent. Yeah, they might not even think expansion is an option, or they might, they may, they may not even know. I know some of those guys have been on the board for twenty, thirty years.
And some of that'll come out like the, the, uh, the bridge deal. You spend five hundred thousand dollars on engineering and, uh, all of a sudden at the end, you'll find out. And that's why, that's why some of this doesn't happen.
And that's, so what, this is kind of examples of, um, yeah, like you're talking about adding another layer really. It's, this is, you know, we got our overall goal, you know, creating revenue streams or increasing revenue. And we're talking about more houses as an objective to meet that goal. And then, um, you know, where I, where I was, when I went to school, it was, you know, either it's, it's actions or policies that support the objectives, which support the goal. So that's exactly what we're talking about is, okay, and these are specific, your specific policies or action items. Like this would be a policy here, like, okay, we wanna, we wanna increase the housing stock and make sure it's, you know, let's just make sure it's close to infrastructure. Now, these are a couple of things you can do.
I, I think.
Touch with D'Artalum.
To me, another one under actions would be, uh, to, to promote and develop improved relationships between counties, city, thrive, manu- uh, developers.
You're talking about for housing or just in general?
For housing.
Yeah. You know, John, you've been to a city-county meeting now, and I know Wanda's in the past. I, I think we have a pretty good relationship, I know the city has different goals in us, but I mean, we, it, it, I'm happy to say that I think every time we meet, our relationship, it keeps getting better. And that's a, that's a positive thing where we have to celebrate that we've built that with the city. And can always be better, sure, but it's pretty darn good now.
Let's, let's shift a, a little bit, let, the gears, let's, we got, we got a good start on, on, you know, saying we want more housing to, to increase revenues. What about another, what about another objective that would be, uh, supportive or at least help us meet, meet the goal?
Well, I think planning and zoning comes in there, um, to create a, a welcoming environment for, uh, manufacturing to come in, economic development.
You know, one, one thing we talk to when we meet with the city is, uh, manufacturing is, it's something we all want. But if we get a manufacturer, um, ideally, it's probably better to be within the city's domain, because they have the ability to do sewer and all of that. And if we get a manufacturer that's located in the county, the city doesn't get, you know, the sales tax, and we don't either. So it just goes to the state. So I, I would say, it, it depends on what it is, but if it's a bigger manufacturer, that's gonna require lots of water uses and stuff like that, that's where we have that conversation with the city and our partnerships. And maybe the city incorporates that or puts it into the ETJ, we just, we just don't have the, the ability to provide a lot of those services, you know, like wastewater and all of that. And that's, that's kind of our conversation, and we, we wouldn't wanna have a manufacturer where the city, just outside the city, where they're not collecting their revenue off of it either. So that's where we have that conversation with them, like.
Yeah, it all depended what kind of industry you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, it really, yeah.
From, uh, my experience with going to Thrive meetings, I would see under that, uh, they have objectives, uh, they supported the Boys and Girls Club, uh, they are supporting housing, uh, they're supporting bringing work, the workmen in from other areas, advertisement, uh, in Omaha, et cetera. That's, that's all part of that process that, that, that they're doing. And we probably don't need to recreate it, but we need to support it.
Cool, yeah, absolutely.
I'll just add another comment, if you don't mind, based upon what Don was saying about policies and zoning. I think there've been a few issues that have come up recently, probably both in the past six months, where there was some commercial development that maybe wanted to take place for kind of the, um, the condominium type workshops for people. And you didn't have appropriate zoning and it was complex on how to move something forward. So trying to figure out what makes it easiest for people to have smaller development, commercial development out in the county, I think would be helpful when you have new ideas, uh, that come forward, trying to find that solution earlier, rather than saying, hey, it just doesn't exist, so we can't do it. I think that would be helpful. And then as we look at how we expand out into the county and have an industry adjacent to the city, the flood zones on the east side of town are a problem. And I know the city spent significant dollars to, um, refute what FEMA said was the city's flood mapping, and they've been able to make some changes. And, and the county just, you know, had accepted what they have, but that really created some problems for industrial development on the east, east side of Yankton. And I hate to think we have to sit for ten years and wait for that to potentially be remapped.
Ryan, have you seen those new flood maps or are you, have you seen the new flood map set for the county that FEMA?
I think I have before, yeah.
Okay, I was, I'd have Gary pull them up, but yeah, like Nancy said, any development, well, really in the county, east to probably Gayville is not an option, I mean, at all. Uh, it's just due to the, due to the, um, requirements. It's a good point.
How about, how about another, how about another objective? Or any, any others, or maybe for the sake, for the sake of just kinda doing this as a practice?
I would, I would, I would suggest, uh, to develop our Napa Junction area.
Yeah, we had that, uh, you've seen the study we did for the sanitary.
Yeah, yes.
That line, and, uh, that was, uh, we got, and Don, you weren't, Don and Wanda was on when we got that, we got that grant, to do that with Stockwells. And I thought that was a pretty good plan they had, but requires a lot of money to do that. Are you talking about develop it for more, more infrastructure or more industry or do you wanna see?
Industry and infrastructure. Uh, you know, we know that BYU Water is not supplying enough water out there, which would have to, that'd be a hurdle.
I didn't realize that.
So that'd be, you'd wanna have that as like an action item as to develop more water out there?
Well, the first, the first one, the biggest one is natural gas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then comes water. We have electricity from two sources out there, so that's not a big issue.
So I'll just add that Napa Junction, we did a study probably four years ago, cause I've been in my job five years. So I think it was four years ago, we did a study and Stockwell went out there and created what a master plan would be. This is when Dakota Plains and Matt Winsand was out there operating it. Right now, the state has dollars to do infrastructure planning. If you submitted sites, they're gonna pick, I think, the top, is it six development sites, large ones?
Sixteen.
And then several, somewhere in large communities, somewhere in smaller five thousand or less. So I had, uh, I spoke with someone out at Napa Junction if they wanted to be included in this, and they declined. So as you talk about wanting to develop Napa, you need to make sure the owners out there are willing and wanting to develop that. Um, because I thought it was unfortunate that they declined to have that.
Who was that, Cargill?
It was a gentleman who's working on a development project, so. So I, if there's, you just need to make sure they're a willing partner, and, and I would hope that they would be, cause I. So I, if there's, you just need to make sure they're a willing partner, and, and I would hope that they would be, 'cause I, I agree with you. It's our best spot for, uh, a s- large development. And getting BY Water to be a partner with you, um, to get them enough water is really crucial as well.
That's a good point.
When I was looking at, uh, Napa Junction or something, uh, it, it appeared to me that the best source of water might be from digging wells.
Uh, I, I think that BY Water that Nancy brought up and Don did too is, yes, important on Napa. But I think it's also important on the housing that, right, 'cause we did develop a few, or rezone some lots. And BY Water, I, I don't, I don't even know if they would get back to us on whether or not they could supply that. So it's an issue for not only economic growth, we're Napa and housing as well, so. And then Nancy, I, uh, is there, is natural gas, is there any realistic plan? I know we want that out there, but i- is there any, is that a realistic option to try to get it to Napa? I know when I visited with Matt, it was a, that was a big project.
Well, it's a chicken and egg.
Yeah.
Uh, industry can't put the pipeline without the major business at the end, because they legally cannot speculate. So you cannot have Northwestern Energy or Mid-American put in a gas line in hopes that they get an end user. You realistically would want to secure your end user, but are they willing to wait the number of years then to install, install what was a fifty million dollar, uh, gas pipeline? Or can you build those two in conjunction with each other? Uh, but the end user really is what will trigger, uh, that pipeline. And is it realistic to put it in with the right end user? Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, you're right. They don't, they come in after a deal's been made, you know, or, or the birds have been.
Yes, and another thing that we had talked about was if it's a private gas line, as opposed to owned by one of the utilities. And there's a lot of potential there, because then you can tap into that and serve a lot of smaller communities or areas along the way. 'Cause you can tap into one area and serve all of, I'll just say Irene as an example. And that's only one tap and one user, 'cause you are limited to the number of taps on a private line before you'd be regulated by the PUC.
And it's very, and it's important, kinda going back to the, the, you know, the discussion about the development at Napa, that, um, how would you as a county commission feel if, you know, Nancy just told you that, you know, certain, certain players are, have declined, you know, to get engaged, you know? And, but yet, say a few years down the road, they're now coming, coming to you and kind of begging for, for help. How, I mean, how would you, how would you feel as a county commission to know that they weren't necessarily want to put skin in the game, now they want all your skin in the game?
When is the TIF on that done? Do we know? Do you know, Don?
It was twenty years with a ten-year balloon, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't remember.
So it's, they got a while yet.
Like you say, is it, is it close to retiring yet, or?
No. We're just happy, I think, to get the payments from Cargill. Okay, so, uh, are there any other items? Uh, I, I think one of, it, it doesn't show that on Dan's sheet, but one of the, uh, economic development projects that we have that is a natural thing is our lake. Uh, and, uh, you know, I guess we could probably claim we're being pretty aggressive at getting campers in. Yeah, uh, but are there other things, other recreational things that, uh, could be added there that?
To give Don some credit, and, and, uh, Commissioner Smith from Clay County was sure happy about, uh, the application. And I, I don't know if you've heard about that, uh, that grant to do the trail from Clay County to Yankton? I'm sure, have you heard about that one?
Rise.
Yeah, the Raise Grant.
Raise Grant. It's probably pretty unlikely, but if that would come through, could be a driver.
Yeah, and it's just for planning at this point.
Yeah.
Just for planning. So we, we might know a lot more, yeah, if it's a award, then.
No. Didn't she say a million and three was the grant, the, the life port?
Yes.
I thought we were talking at, on our telephone call, at six hundred and fifty thousand.
I did too.
Everyone's between, but keep those numbers going.
Well, and, and, and so I was kind of in on the, the application, uh, writing with, with the National Park Service. And if you see like the scope of what they were going to plan, you know, they were lumping in, you know, not just this, you know, trail that parallels the river, but all, you know, a trail going to Spirit Mound or going through, uh, uh, Clay County Park. So it was like, they're wild, lumped in stuff.
This is just, this was just for the, for the study.
Right, just a plan.
Million and three for the plan.
Right. So, and, and we're not familiar with very, well, we're not very familiar with, uh, this raise program. I mean, if it's a, if it's an all or nothing, you know, award situation, I'd say chances are pretty small that they're gonna get it. Now, if it's a, you know, if staff at the USDOT reviews it and says, you know, hey, we can't really, we're not gonna fund all, all of this stuff, but we'll give you a half a million to do the, the specific trail, that's probably a good shot.
Well, I, I hear you on the radio just, uh, this week from Mr., is it Musk, Musk, the billionaire?
Oh, Elon?
Elon.
Elon Musk.
Yeah, that as little as six months, we may start doing away with all workers on artificial intelligence. So the rest of the people are gonna have to come to the lake, see.
Catch fish, right?
So, so does that mean then we can start planning to build a resort down there?
Yeah.
You know, nice, big, fancy resort?
I'd say we, we oughta get going on it.
That'd be a good idea to bring.
That was, that was one of my plans there.
I mean, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, but the, the big problem with any development in the lake is the fact you have no sewer.
Yeah, no, understand.
And it's fifty million dollars.
Yes, and, and the wa- and the soils down there, you have high water tables. You're really limited on how much, uh, septic you can really put down there before you're gonna have some serious environmental problems. So it's, you're, the lake area, the, the, below the bluff area, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hard thing to develop something grand. Down there.
I, I agree with you on everything you said, a hundred percent. And when we did that set study, yes, the whole big thing was fifty million. Yes, I, I agree, that's too much, but if you chop that up into little sections to get that pipe out to Deer Boulevard was five million. And last year, the state, what was it, sixty-six million dollars they had? It, if we're thinking big, it's doable.
And all the people that showed up did not want to be in a sewer district.
That, that was, that was the hardest part.
Because no, nobody wants to raise their hand and get a, another bill that will last a lifetime, that will continuously go up, much like city sewer. It's only gonna be five dollars.
I, I agree.
And it goes up every year.
One thing we're, we do have.
I think they're up to twenty now.
One, some of those people were from, from Timberland Park who have a failing system. And from what I've heard, and you guys probably all heard this, is that's living on borrowed time, that's in the county. And what, what happens when that fails, which it will? Do we go back to septic tanks, or do we, do we bite the bullet? I mean, there are some examples in the state, like Brown County, what was that development? That the state came in and just took it over and, and forced everybody to go on that. Nobody wants to go down that road either. I, I don't know what the answer is.
Some of you may have been around, like, I think, I know Don was on the commission, I think, back, uh, well, it was about ten years ago. You know, we, we worked, uh, we worked, worked with the county on a kind of a corridor plan.
Yeah.
From the city.
Planning Commission.
Out to the, yeah, on the planning commission. And, uh, great ideas, you know, big, big vision, talk about, you know, making big ideas.
Apparently, nobody in that plan, um, said no trailer parks, no camper parks.
So here's, yeah.
No storage units, because that's all there is.
So that was, I guess, one of the things that you might say failed out of that planning process was, we had, even though we created an overlay district, to handle, you know, land uses and guide the planning along that corridor, um, really no, there's really no enforcement of, you know, the policies in that, in that court.
No, I think the problem was the zoning was so vague and ambiguous that they could put, uh, storage units and camper parks. And if they did A, B, and C, they had to, they had to get a permit. So they did A, B, and C, which is why we have, I don't know, a thousand, two thousand campers out there using a septic tank.
And it was, this was just before Gary's time, but, uh, yeah, it was, it was a very ambitious plan and, 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 uh, and it was changes to the zoning that maybe should have had more teeth in it. Uh, because if you looked, and I, I guess I never really saw if, if the overlay district language, you know, once we got done helping, helping Pat with the, the language of it, then it was kinda up to, up to him and the planning commission to kinda move that through. I don't know that it ever really.
It never.
Saw it.
I don't, never moved forward.
So that was, you know, that's a, that's, you know, again, you know, it's, you don't have any teeth, so it's really hard to enforce or make it nice, you know? If there's not that enforcement. Plus, I know back, the big, the big elephant or the big, you know, eight hundred pound gorilla, even at that time too, was, you know, what about water and sewer? You know, and I think the thinking, you know, among everybody was, you know, oh, geez, we gotta put all this in right now. Where, you know, it could have been phased in, you know, over a period of years.
Well, we discussed, you know, with Napa that we need gas line, and if we could get a big developer in, that would spur the gas. I think it's maybe similar to this sanitation, if we could get a, and I don't know what that would be in, it's some sort of major player that might get the ball rolling there too. And it would help offset the costs of the citizens, 'cause, yeah, that's a legitimate, I, I understand those concerns a hundred percent, uh.
But then your major players also don't wanna be the person who's going to foot the bill for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, no.
That's not necessarily always true.
I, I think it's a, it's a poor idea to plan around having an angel come in and save you.
That was, yeah.
Well, there goes my plan.
It's, it's not always necessary true that the big players aren't gonna invest in, in the, that type of stuff either. You know, if, if they're interested enough to spend a bunch of money down there, they're, they're gonna do what they need to do to get, get it done.
I want.
It's tough. Uh, is Eric, is that still an opportunity zone, or does that opportunity zone label, is that gone now?
No, I think it's still exist.
Because the, the neat thing about that, and you could probably talk more about it than I, uh, uh, that development, it was all like tax deductible, if somebody would develop that infrastructure, right? So that's why people were, you know, and that, that, that means more than a place that's not an, uh, development zone, correct?
Yeah, that was a ten-year program that started five years ago. And the reason a lot of people didn't get into it is because they could not get the rules set with IRS. So people around here were really kind of wary of that. People who were doing, uh, big projects in big cities, um, raising areas of dilapidated housing or old malls or whatever it might be, and creating all these great new developments, it was good for them. Uh, we did have a project within the last six months that came forward and asked about opportunity zones. And I referred them to someone else who knows way more than I do, because I don't know what the current tax laws are around that, because you're already halfway into the program.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanna, I wanna hit pause just a second here. And let's just take a step back here, look at this, uh, this, you know, the, this recording here of the discussion we've had on economic development. That, so this is kind of a, kind of a peek into how, how this stra- you know, strategic plan could be developed on those five, you know, top priorities, uh, that we have. You know, we, we develop a, a goal statement for each topic. We've got some, let's call them major steps to get to that goal. And then we've got some, some baby steps to, to look at, you know, to help, help the big steps. Um, so the other thing we could add, you know, in the planning process would be, um, and maybe economic development might not be the best way to, to do it, but, uh, if, let, let's say this is what the list is that you came up with for, for this topic, that, you know, we're done. So the next thing would be, uh, actually, two things, would be what kind of measurable, uh, outcomes can we put on these? You know, for example, do we, do we say by twenty twenty-eight, we're gonna have two hundred more houses built out in the county? You know, something that's reasonable, or something like that, you know, or increase, increase property tax revenue by four or five percent, whatever. But that, so again, you know, that could be the next thing we would develop is a list of measurable outcomes, or performance measures. If you wanna go even deeper into that, that, uh, uh, that line of, uh, thinking, then do you then look at, you know, who, who is gonna be responsible for, you know, looking after this stuff? You know, that, and that would be where you would start, you know, looking at your, at your departments in the county. You know, so maybe some of these things might come up, and so, you know, planning, planning zoning might be, you know, in charge of saying, all right, we, we can, we can do something with our zoning workings to help, help get more houses out here, you know, that kinda stuff. So then, when a year comes down the road, you can say, all right, what did Gary, the planning commission, do to, to help us, you know, reach this objective? Right? And if he doesn't, you know, if he doesn't, you know, you gotta put him on suspension. Just kidding. But that, that idea, right? So that's where I would, you know, again, taking this from here, that would be, that would be what I would have you consider, you know, thinking about.
And so if we went to the next step after objectives and went to performance measures, how do we develop them?
So that'd be, well, and, and so, for the, for the purpose of planning, I mean, you can pull them out of wherever, you know, just to, just to have them. And especially today, you're just, you know, if you're just kinda doing, this is just kind of a, a very hypothetical situation.
So I think, uh, here's a good way of maybe doing a perform, so under more houses, the first one is close to existing infrastructure. Uh, if you start with looking at what areas do we have open for housing now that are within so much distance of existing infrastructure? We say, okay, it's, we have this many acres available now, and the measure would be like, we want that to be increased by fifty percent. You know, that many more acres that are within this, uh, area. Because, you know, you know, the county's not in, county doesn't build houses. The best we can do is do what we can to make sure that the areas are available for the houses to be built.
I agree.
Yeah.
And, and kinda, that's a good, good thought. And I think one of our big things, uh, that's been a hindrance is BY Water. I don't know if we can revisit that, and has there been any attempt, Nancy, with an organization kinda trying to work with BY? I mean, is there something we can do to, you know, try to over, 'cause that seems like that's a huge barrier in a lot of development? You know, Napa Junction and housing, is there something we can do to help that out?
I think you can remain optimistic, but realistically, um, it, it, they receive federal funding and they have their rules and their board, uh, so you can continue to communicate with them or continue to, um, uh, work to get people on the board who maybe support some of the initiatives that you're trying to move forward. I think, you know, you have to put the, the work in to be able to do some of those things. And as you're talking about all these different areas, I really wanna encourage kind of what Don had said earlier about all the partners that you have out there, make sure they're invited to the table to be a part of the conversation. Make sure your department heads are here to be a part of the conversation, because otherwise, you're working in a silo and you're creating goals and initiatives that the five of you think are important without really bringing the key players in those areas together.
She knows what a silo is.
That's because you probably told her what it was before.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I've had some experience with that, yes.
When it comes to the development, I agree with you, like, it'd be better to have a lot more, uh, cooperation with BY Water, with the electric and stuff, you know, ex- you know, um, just this here overhead power line too. Um, there's several things that I brought up to Gary about, you know, when they first had their first route. And I was just like, you're gonna go right down what would be an existing road down in, in the future. And, you know, even though things aren't kinda plotted that way, that's kind of how the planning and zoning would plot things in the future. So we should be working, you know, just moving these, this line by thirty feet makes a big difference in the future.
Yeah, so when you're talking about broadband, or I was a part of the conversations with the. Yeah, so when you're talking about broadband, or I was a part of the conversations with the, uh, communications tower out there, those are all the things that you should be thinking of, not in your one year plan, but in your five year plan. So you have a lot of that kind of set in place, so when they're ready to do the development, you already have kind of a path put forward where you want it to go or how, how you need it to flow out. So that puts you in a position power as opposed to being responsive to what they're asking for.
Like having that five year plan, that long-term plan gives better direction to Gary to, when he, when people come in with projects. It's like, well, this is more of where the county wants to go with this stuff, and that's why he can give better direction to people.
Well, I think Gary's key in creating your plan, when you're talking about housing and knowing where those key areas are and where infrastructure is already available. Not at the end of a BYwater line, but somewhere closer to some of the, where they're sourcing it, uh, that will make sense for you. Uh, but I think Gary is maybe underutilized in, in all of what you're trying to do and plan for and I'm sorry if I'm.
He's, he's not doing enough.
I'm putting more work on his plate, but, but I think, you know, he's really the expert of when you look at where should some of this development go in your county? Uh, he understands that better than anyone.
Gary, we're gonna need all this done in a six month.
Yeah, I know. I, I just wanted to say, yeah, I agree, and one of the issues we've had is we have to get that data from some of these other, other companies and things too, of where those, where those existing water lines and things are. And, and that's something I think we had a question a while back that was supposedly supposed to be sent to the auditors department on a regular basis and no, haven't seen it. And so, yeah, those kind of things are, are definitely important and, and there are things that, that we've done in the past that I've been involved in in other places where, like to Ryan's point, if, if a development occurs within a half mile of an existing water line, they basically are reco, required to tap in and extend. And there's other ways to, to deal with, you can do payback type things where then as people hook onto those lines, they can get some of their money back and things. So there are a number of things that we can do in that regard.
Gary, for the payback, would that be something we'd have to do as an ordinance on us, or is that what BY would do?
No, that's something we would have to do that, that, uh, where you set it up to where like, the one I was involved in, they had up to ten years, basically anybody that hooked in had to pay their, their frontage amount, basically, cost, and then after ten years, the city, county, or whatever, got the, got the money for future development from that, so.
That's probably something you could just, you know, have him look at setting something like that up and bring into us, uh, if you've done that before, like a payback program that much.
Sure.
You know, I think we'd be remiss though if we were looking at, uh, the, the BYwater issue, that we didn't have some kind of, uh, objective of improving relationships.
So that, yeah, uh, I was gonna say, and, and kind of follow to that and, and what Gary was just saying, what, if you were to measure that, you know, obviously houses, you know, those are things you can count, right? But how do you, how do you measure a relationship? Do you count like the number of meetings you have in the next year? Or the number of, of agreements you can come up with?
I think if they would.
Or how many, how many members of their board you can fire? I don't know.
If they would provide us with a map, I guess that would be a good start.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the measure, right, is the sharing of information. So i- if we have a map that's within X, X years old of all the current infrastructure that they have. And then on the art converses, we are sharing, you know, all of what our goals are, you know, in terms of development.
Yep, that's good.
Yeah, GIS layers are pretty common these days, and so they're not really hard to provide. For the most every company like that has that later, so.
Don, weren't you on the BY board? I, I think I know somebody who would be good soon.
I sat on the BYwater board for, for twenty-five years and resigned.
Why aren't you back on there?
Resigned in the middle of one of the meetings because I couldn't take it anymore, but anyway. That, that probably leads to a bigger discussion, uh, and, and it's, to me, and this is just my opinion, so it may not be where other board members feel it is. But to me, that entity, uh, is exactly identifies the conflict between rural and city. And they're rural and they put this up and they want to protect their income flows and they want to, you know, not, not put in any additions unless it's a guaranteed success, et cetera, et cetera. I understand those things, but we still can talk and there, there's got to be some areas that we can have some mutual work together on.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, I don't think, uh, like, you know, the whole Westbrook Estates project was not like going to a, you know, square dance or a, you know what I mean? It was not a fun, not a fun deal, right?
That one was before my time, but we will be working, uh, with the city for water on our next housing addition up there because of the negotiations that the city has had with BY to put a plan in place how to serve residences.
Could we, Mr. Chair, could we put a couple commissioners on? It seems like that's a big issue that affects a lot of development. Would you wanna put a couple commissioners in charge of trying to sit down with BYwater and, and maybe try to understand each other better?
Sure. That would be under measurement, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, really anything would be success in that regard, I would think.
So we have, yeah, maybe, again, you can get re, if you want to dive really deep, so then, yeah, you could say, uh, so we got, okay, if our, if our measure is to have shared information with BY and so we're gonna put two commissioners on then, on that task. So then a year from now, you're, now you're coming back to the commission with the full commission and saying, hey, yeah, well, they've been pretty, they've been pretty cooperative with us, and we've, we've been cooperative with them. Or, you know, one of these discussions fell way apart. And then it, you know. There should not be any fear of not reaching all of your measures on all of your topics.
Yeah, I, if you make them all, you haven't set them high enough.
Right, that's right, right, yeah, yeah, exactly, absolutely. But yeah, you know, and that would be the purpose of evaluation, a year from now would be, um, um, okay, yeah, your developable acres for housing only increased by thirty percent, you, you come back and, you know, you re-square and say, uh, what do we need to do?
And so, yeah, in, in, in my view, economic development is a perfect example of where, if city, county, other organizations thrive, we're all working together in, in publishing what's getting done and what's happening. Our county is, is a great county. We do fantastic things, we've got fantastic things. Probably the message that gets to most of the people is there's nothing but a bunch of negative issues out there. And that's created by twenty-five, thirty people.
Yep, they, they usually yell pretty loud.
So we, that's another reason, I think, to have, uh, two people work with, uh, BY and with, uh, Setion.
Sounds good, yeah. Yep. So what do you think? So this is, this is a pretty good example of the, of the work you can do, uh, you know, in setting up your, your strategic plan.
You know, I think we identified a big problem that, you know, maybe wasn't clear to everybody before. That's affecting multiple areas where we wanted to move forward and, uh, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think, I think in one of those, in one of those, in one of those example plans you have on, on the table there, I think it's the Sarasota County, Sarasota County one. In their plan, they, under the, under the objectives, they, they actually talked about, uh, challenges, challenges and, uh, you know, opportunities for, for implementing those goals. And that might, you know, with, with the way things have gone in, in Yankton County, that might be something to, you know, put, put on the board as, you know, as factual material, you know, that's, okay. You know, we want, we want to increase housing or add more housing to increase revenue. But we also know that, you know, certain, you know, certain whatever, certain groups don't want to have da, 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 da. So that's maybe, maybe good to put that out there.
Okay, um, for going forward with this, um, what are your thoughts? What, 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 what would you guys like to do? I'll lead off.
You, you're the leader.
For, for one thing, uh, in, in the area that I'm, would be accountable for, uh, I would certainly like to review that plan with this group and get their additional, uh, additions to the plan, uh, de, deletions from the plan and, and, uh, before, uh, anything goes public.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Um, are, so are you still thinking, um, let's see which copy that was? Who's got it? Are you hiding that one?
Which one?
Got a lot of papers there, I don't know.
Mike, you got it here. Do you feel comfortable having, okay, so, you know, each commissioner has their, their topic, you know, their responsibility. Are you, are you, uh, comfortable enough to take your topic and kind of flush out, you know, turning your topic into a goal statement?
Well, I.
And objectives? I'd say the very least objectives.
I think we all should shoot at that, uh, but I think it would be beneficial for, for me anyway, if as we looked at those things, we, we got the information from you on who do you talk to, how you do it? What are the resources? And, and maybe that's where District Three comes in for most of the plans, I, I don't know, but, uh, I don't want myself to go out and be the only person that goes out on that one area that I'm responsible for, develop a plan by myself and, uh, cause I think it's a responsibility of the entire commission.
Yeah, and, and one, well, and here, here's one idea, one thought you could do about that is, you know, still have your commissioners, you know, whatever your topic is, develop that list. But then, you know, as a group, you know, at a future meeting, you're talking about, you know, you, Don, you're gonna present your stuff on county share responsibility and what you found out. And then all the other commissioners can weigh in on, on what you came up with. You know, likewise, uh, Zawanda with detention services, you know, again, you know, no one's gonna necessarily walk through with blinders on. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna share all your information with, with the group. Does that make sense? Or, and, and now, if you're talking about like having us kind of help you?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask if the five of us, uh, would have access to you to bounce ideas off.
Oh, I'm, I'm pretty tough to get a hold of. That, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Now, I guess, let me ask you this, um, so the impression I had kind of coming into this, you know, talking to Don, that, you know, you wanted to have a strategic plan. And, you know, maybe, maybe I was thinking too quick about this, that you want to have, you want to have something that, you know, is complete and ready to go or ready to be adopted, say in a month. But maybe it needs to slow down a little bit and take some time and discuss each topic.
You know, I don't know, uh, the roads is a gigantic issue. The ambulance is a gigantic issue, I, whether you, you can go to all the resources, you've been to the state. You, you've gone to state resources, you, Dan, I know you have, uh, I don't know, I, I, I think maybe a month, one could, if one of us is ready, we could bring that in at a meeting and review it.
I'll probably be ready with a, a recommendation for the ambulance probably within a month on at least getting started down the path. And then I, and, and it'll be up to all of us. I, I think kind of what you envision is one of us does the research and then we come to the rest of you and here's what I found and maybe here's three options. This is my recommendation, but maybe you say, well, Dan, we're gonna do something different because, you know. And that, that, then we all have buy-in and we all have, uh, responsibility, I guess, in that regard. And we all have a voice, so.
I think, and I think we could, I think you can accomplish those, uh, tasks. If you can focus on, you know, just the big picture stuff, like, okay, what's the overarching message you want to get with roads? And then I would say, don't worry about like these detailed things. Actually, that's where District Three can come in and help you fill in those, those details. But, you know, you might be able to think with, with, uh, what do you have?
He's got ambulance.
Okay, so, yeah, you, uh, if, I would think, yeah, you should be able to say, you know, probably go through your mind and say, ambulance services, what are we gonna do? And, you know, if your goal is, God, we need to have, we need to have better response, or we need to have better ambulance service system. Okay, what are you thinking about that would help make that happen? You know, is it, uh, you know, better communication, you know, uh, that, that kind of stuff? And then we can come in and help you with, with those finer details.
So, uh, as we, uh, go through the year, we've, we've always, each one of us had five or six or eight areas within the county that we're liaison person for. Take ambulance, for example. John's, John's the liaison person and Dan's the strategic planning person. Uh, I would expect that they'd be working pretty close together.
We actually, we actually just discussed with the city to, to form a committee with a couple city people, Dan and I and, and Gary and, and that too, to build a committee to look at stuff too, so.
So can I ask a question that the viewing audience is probably wondering? Have you hired your new ambulance director?
No.
No.
And then why are you planning for a division that you don't even know what your new person coming in really has and can bring to the table for that? So that's one that I think could sit back a little and let some of the other ones.
Cause we have a gigantic problem that has to be resolved.
And we have people making applications, so we're working towards getting that.
Yeah, so I thought, you know, rather than having that in a month, maybe it's two months if you're gonna have a new person hired and let them be a part of what is their plan of work. Um, because you're gonna get more buy-in from your new ambulance director if they're a part of creating it. And I don't know what big problem other than probably money that, that you need to fix, uh, with the ambulance. But I just think that might be one that could hold off just a little bit. And I'm hoping you have a, a great pool of candidates to hire from, so you don't have to go around and, and do a second round of hiring.
And I'm, I'm open to whatever, whatever process you want to take, um, you know, as a commission. You know, if you want to do it, if you want to do topic by to, you know, topic by topic, month by month, um, so it's fine with me. And I think if you can have a good discussion, that'd be the basics, you know, the basic outcome of this process is have a good discussion.
I, I guess, Eric, what, what I was thinking about is that, uh, once a month, we could go through one, possibly two, in executive session and get the discussion out in executive session. So we come to the table with a concrete plan with, uh, for input from the, from the citizens.
Sure. Is, are, are any of you, uh, uncomfortable, uh, coming up with a, like a list of objectives for your, for your certain area? Cause I could, one thing we could do is, you know, or if you're struggling to come up with a list of things, you know, we could give you kind of an example or kind of a primer of things you may want to consider. And actually, you know, you can take, you can take those plans if you'd like, you know, and just look them over. Cause there's, there's no shortage of good ideas in there. I would say, you know, if you get your list of objectives, um, and if you're approaching five, I'd say that's a, a nice sweet number. You know, if you're getting to like towards seven to ten, uh, you're, you're, you're pushing yourself a little too far. You're gonna, you're pushing the county too far to accomplish all those things. Cause it would be hard to then say in a year go, well, geez, we missed, you know, we missed this and this and this. So if you keep it, you know, a reasonable list and, and then we could come in and help you. So if you keep it, you know, a reasonable list, and, and then we could come in and help you, we could kinda help you with these, you know, these fine-tuned details here. And, and even come up with, you know, this list of, of measures and, and who, who might be the champion of those, of those topics.
Well, since I brought this up, I'll take a run at the first one. Then they, everybody can beat up on me and we'll go on to the second and third, so.
Don, you'll have BY Water and natural gas by then to the end.
Well, and, and, yeah, we're, you know, we are, we're accessible, we're very accessible. You know, and of course, uh, some of you guys have, have come in, you know, visit us, yeah, that's fine. Uh, we're definitely open to, you know, visiting and, and those kinda things, so. Whether, and maybe, you know, to make it efficient, you know, maybe, Don, do you wanna be kinda the, the, the funnel or the kinda the gatekeeper of information like going between the commission and us?
Eric, I would say go through Gary, and the reason I said that is if I me- emailed Don and John, it's a open meeting violation. So I, I would say to keep us all informed if we want to funnel it through Gary and then we're not getting in trouble.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Good point, Dan. Does anybody have any other discussion items that they wanna put on the table?
No, but I know Mr. Welsh wants to make a public comment.
Just, just one, one second.
And he's been, and he's been very patient listening to this.
Okay, so, we're, we're okay with the process?
I'm pretty much good till, till our next meeting, I mean, we got something to work on anyway, so.
Yeah, I, and take, take, uh, take a copy of one of those plans home, man.
Oh, definitely, I'll copy it.
I'm gonna give this to Gary and have him scan it and send it out to all of us and then we'll have an app.
Yeah. Or I can, I can email Gary a copy too, like with the original PDF. Yeah, that one's already got faint, faint gray on it. But, yeah, uh, I think, I think that would, you know, looking at what, what another county has done will give you ideas. You know, thinking of like a pattern book or a, or a catalog.
One of my biggest concerns about setting, as I remember back in, in, uh, private business, uh, the members of the team have to be involved in the process. Cause if you skip out on them, there, there's gonna be no buy-in, it just won't happen. So, in, in this process, we definitely, if you're in a direct line item, uh, for example, on, on, uh, on the area that I have, I would wanna be sure and talk with, with Mike and, and the roads. I'd wanna talk with the ambulance people, I'd wanna talk with several others. And then, and then put the thing together.
Yeah, definitely it'd be good to have, you know, vet each of your topics with the staff or the department that would be most in charge of, of running that show.
Yep, okay, uh, I think a very constructive two hours, almost two hours.
Not bad, no, no, so think about this, you know, if you, we, uh, just with one topic that's not even on the top of the list, we spent the better part of an hour and a half, right?
Yeah.
Probably, so, probably good we didn't try to tackle this whole thing today.
Yeah. With, with that, then?
I'm willing to come back as many times as you need to to, you know, hammer these out or, you know, like we said, kinda keep that email chain going.
Well, and one of the opportunities that, that we don't know about, uh, enough, and it's one of my plans was to get a, a better line of communication between District Three and, and the county, uh, is, you, you can get opportunity ideas by going through District Three's, uh, format, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Public comment.
Don, you sort of stole my thunder a little bit, and I'll tell you right now that, uh, in a previous life, I did exactly this thing on an Air Force base with twelve thousand people that had to close in three years and move all of the training from where it was to a new place while we kept the training operating at full speed. It's kinda like scrapping an airplane while you're still flying it. Comment number one, what we're talking about here is threats and opportunities. Every department head in this county knows exactly what those threats are. They know what the opportunities are, and they know how to handle it. If you don't go directly to those people and ask them, what are your top five threats? What are your top five opportunities? And ask them how to solve it, they will not buy in, I promise you. And I also promise you that they know how to fix it if you ask. Your job as a committee or commission is to prioritize those threats and opportunities and take the most important ones first that would fit within your funding. You also have organizations like Nancy's and other non-governmental organizations such as, um, Chamber of Commerce and so forth that represent manufacturing, that represent farming, that represent retail, who can also tell you what their top five threats and opportunities are. Uh, your utilities and your towns could do the same thing, if I'm not mistaken. Every incorporated town has a mayor and a council of some sort. They can tell you, don't tell them, let them tell you. And then you prioritize, because if you try to do this from the top down, it won't work, I promise you. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, good, good comment. Louis, Louis, I know you, you don't come without a comment. None?
He's waiting for the snow.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, meeting's adjourned.